Attention, uh, if I can get everybody to stand up. We've got, uh, Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts, Cub Scout Pack seventy-five. They're gonna lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Jensen, if you could come up and, uh, tell us, tell us your boys' names in the Cub Scout pack.
Oh, thank you, everybody, for allowing us to be here tonight. My name is Jensen, and I'm the Cub Scout.
Hand the microphone.
Pack seventy-five.
Hand the microphone.
Thank you, I'm the Cub Scout Pack seventy-five. And with us tonight, we have a contingent from Pack seventy-five and Troop seventy-five. And we have, starting here, we have, the gentleman that was reading to you was Damian. Say hi, Damian. Followed by Jerk, say hi, Jerk. They have Luke. Logan. The little guy over there is Kenny, or Ken, sorry, Ken. And Ty. So we'd like to, um, thank you for giving us the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance, and for giving us the opportunity to see, um, civ- um, guys in action, uh, for our community. And I hope they can follow your lead in doing so. Uh, we appreciate it. If you guys are interested or have kids that are interested in Cub Scout Pack seventy-five, um, our email is cubpackseventyfive@outlook.com. Again, cubpackseventyfive@outlook.com. Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause. All right, great. Okay, uh, moving on with our meeting, please sit. Okay, uh, I'm gonna go over our time limit policy procedures. Okay, this is for everybody, it's virtual. Anyone wishing to speak, and also in person, is asked to open the list of participants and click the raised hand icon on their name. When recognized by the chair, address comments to the chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. Uh, please cancel the raised hand sign after speaking. Presentations must be kept under ten minutes. Please silence your cell phones. The chat box can also be used, uh, to ask simple questions. Board members are required to keep their video active during the board meeting. And note that the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on the agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Board actions such as draft resolutions and outgoing letters will be posted for, on the, on the public Google Drive. Okay, and, uh, hopefully, everybody got a chance to sign in. This is for public record for our meeting. Right there on the table, we've got the sign-in page. And right now, we're gonna go through roll call. Uh, Kay Cooney Aguard. Rodney A Wong.
Here.
Charmaine Duran, Vice Chair.
Here.
Guy Anoy, our Treasurer.
Here.
Brandon Lee.
Here.
Lawrence could not be here tonight. Dan Smith.
Present.
Nate Tecucci.
Here.
Okay. Tony Velasco.
Present.
And myself, Larry Varey. Okay, we're only missing one. We have Quorum. Okay, we're move, start off with public safety reports, and we're honored to have the, uh, Pearl City Fire Department here. Please come up and give us our report, thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm Captain Brandon Ricard with the ProCity Fire Station. This is your statistics for July twenty-twenty-four. Um, structure fires, we responded to one. Wilden or brush is one. Nuisance would be eight, which includes rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle. Eight activated alarms, one hundred and fifty-three medical calls, seven vehicle accidents, three mountain rescues, and one hazardous materials incident. The fire safety tips and announcements would be back to school fire safety. Educating students on what they can do to stay safe during the school year is important and often overlooked. College students living away from home should take a few minutes to ensure they are living in a fire-safe environment. Don't overload outlets. Keep lamps, light fixtures, and light bulbs away from anything that can burn. Never use an extension cord with large appliances like a refrigerator or microwave. Cook only where it is allowed. Keep the cooking area clean and free of anything that can burn. If a fire starts in a microwave, keep the door closed and unplug the unit. If a disaster happens, knowing who to call and where to meet is an important part of emergency planning for you and your family. Pick one main contact locally, and one camp contact out of town who may be easier to reach during a disaster. That's it. Any questions?
Hey Chief, thank you very much, uh, uh, Board members, any questions for HFD? Seeing none, hearing none? Thank you very much for your immediate responses in Pearl City. Have a great, great week. Okay, moving on to Honolulu Police Department. We've got Lieutenant Glenn Iwaki. Lieutenant, you online?
Hi, yes, I'm online. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you loud and clear, sir.
All right, yeah. Good evening, ProCity Neighborhood Board. I'm Lieutenant Iwaki, District Three, ProCity. So I have the stats for June twenty-twenty-four compared to July twenty-twenty-four. So motor vehicle deaths, um, it was five in June, uh, four July. Burglaries were seven, and it stayed the same at seven. Deaths were twenty-three in June, twenty-one in July. And, uh, car break-ins was six, June twenty-twenty-four, and four for July. And also, uh, the safety tip of the month is, with students going back to school, please allow, or please slow down around all school zones, and abide by all posted speed limit signs. Be aware of pedestrians in the crosswalk. And I also wanted to add, um, I know we had a problem up in, uh, Apoi Po Street, and I have officers up there as we speak now, but, um, this morning, we had one of our sergeants from, uh, District Three go up there and check the area. It was clear. And also, one of our community police officers went up there, uh, I'm not sure if it was yesterday or the day before, and spoke to the, the residents there again about the construction vehicles on the road. Uh, my pictures that my officer sent me, um, after checking, I believe, two nights ago, and it looks clear here. Um, and I believe he moved that construction vehicle into his driveway now. So it's still there, but it's in his driveway now. So we're, we're consistently checking on that. We're gonna continue to check on it until that problem goes away.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Uh, any others for your report?
No, that's it, and, um, I'm gonna address that speeding we talked about at the last, uh, board meeting down on LeHua as well.
Okay, and sir, if you could, uh, stay online because we have community concerns, which will be coming up, uh, uh, next. Uh, there, I think there'll be some things to catch your attention. Okay, Board members, any? Go ahead. Okay. All right, uh, Board members, uh, go ahead, there, Rodney?
Uh, yes, Officer, um, we're talking about the, uh, e-bikes, uh, at the last meeting. Um, and there was, I, I talked to my friend about this, and the designation between an e-bike and, uh, the other type of electrical cycle. Um, his definition of an e-bike was one that was a pedal assist, and the ones that didn't have pedal assist were not considered e-bikes. I mean, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, that is totally correct, yeah. So, some of the e-bikes, um, well, if to be considered an e-bike, it has to have that pedal. Although, I don't see the, the operators pedaling it most of the time. But if it does have that pedal, then it is considered an e-bike. An e-bike still, um, as we speak, uh, I, I know legislation and stuff is working on it, but it's not, uh, licensable right now, yeah? So, um, yeah, that's what they're working on right now, but, yeah, like the Surons, I believe, uh, that company, they don't have, and they're considered electric, uh, dirt bikes. So they can be registered too, 'cause dirt bikes aren't allowed on the streets. But that's a big safety concern too, 'cause they go like eighty-five miles per hour. And these, these, uh, operators are riding in on the sidewalks and, you know, on the streets, so, yeah, that's all stuff that needs to be, so we have a e-bike, uh, enforcement team in, in District Three ProCity that's been doing a good job, but all we can really hit 'em with is, uh, that helmet required, uh, law at this time. Yeah, so they've been citing the kids for the helmets and stuff like that, but as far as like licensing, 'cause there is no licensing for it, yeah, it's been a hard thing. Or, like, riding in on the sidewalk in a business district too, um, that's, even regular bikes are not allowed, so they've been citing for that.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Duran, you had your hands up?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, say thank you, um, for taking action regarding the commercial vehicles. I know some of the residents from that street are, um, tuning into this meeting, and I really know that they'll appreciate the pro-action by you. So thank you so much.
No problem, yeah, we'll keep on that. Thank you.
Okay, Board members, any other questions? Seeing none, community, any issues you wanna bring up to HPD directly? Please come up to the mic and identify yourself.
Hi, um, I haven't seen any police officers on Waimea Mono Home Road yet.
Ma'am, what's your name?
Just cruising up. At the last meeting, I was telling them about how fast they go up and down Waimea Mono Home Road. I haven't seen anybody cruising. I know you can't hide and camera thingy, but the officer, what's his name? You, um, over there, yeah.
Iwaki.
You were gonna have somebody just kind of out, that people would slow down. I haven't seen any officers on Waimea Mono, the side roads or anything. And then another concern is Ho'oumai Mai during school. You know, as we're waiting to go into, to pick up our kids, everybody's passing on the side, which I can understand, but they're, they're speeding down, and there are kids on the bottom towards the circle that are crossing the road. One day, somebody's gonna hit the kid, because they just wing it down past us. Or they're coming from, uh, Highlands Elementary towards Waimea Mono Home Road, speeding down. And then, there, sometimes they're both speeding down, and then they're stuck, because they're both illegally in that one lane. So when we did have, uh, an officer, kinda like hanging on the bike back there, everybody was good. But something about the school had only certain funding, a certain amount of funding, and then the guy was gone, and then everybody went back to speeding down, getting stuck, and then the kids are crossing the street. So, I don't know if you're gonna wait for somebody to get hit before you go down there, or find somebody to go down there, but I see it every single day. And it's scary. So, anyway, those are the two streets. I used to walk my grandchildren down Waimea Mono. I don't do that anymore, because people are crazy. And I have a funny feeling that, um, when they're speeding in the morning, going up towards, um, ProCity High School, 'cause they gotta get the kid to school and then get to work, or the guy's coming down trying to get to work, that if I'm on the sidewalk, the car has nowhere to go but on the sidewalk. So I don't wanna get hit. But I'd rather walk, 'cause the traffic is bad. So something has to be done. I don't know what, but something has to be done before somebody gets killed again. Thank you.
Ma'am, can I get your name? Collette, last name? Okay. And if you could, contact me after, later. I wanna get some other details from you. And, uh, and of course, we know speeding is, is a big subject right now. But, uh, let me get community concerns. Anything else for HPD? Seeing none, we're gonna transition into community concerns, and I'm sure there's gonna be some topic on HPD. Do I have anyone who would like to talk? Elaine, you wanna come up and talk about your concern?
Three minutes, uh, Elaine.
Hi, I'm Elaine Funnacochee. I'm here because a newly appointed Neighborhood Board Commission person is here, and I could not attend his ceremony, because I was committed to attend my police officer's friend who was promoted to Lieutenant on that day. So, Larry, congratulations, and I know you're gonna serve us well.
Thank you, thank you, Elaine. Yeah, I want you guys to know Elaine, you know, she's part of the Pearl City all these years. She was on the board for many years. Wild District Park, as it came to, she helped design the building and everything, and, uh, we love you, Elaine. Okay, let's get into community concerns, 'cause, uh, this board's got some work to do. And thank you. Please come up to the mic, ma'am, and identify yourself.
Aloha, everybody, my name is Chucky Agafa. I work at ProCity High School. My concern is, in the front of LeHua Elementary, this is down LeHua Avenue, we need to get speed bumps going there, because just like what Miss said about walking her grandkids to school, a lot of speeding coming out of the peninsula, a lot of speeding going down LeHua Avenue during the school week. Also here, up at Ho'iki'i, we need speed bumps there to slow down whoever comes into the school by the elementary, Momilani Elementary, at ProCity High School. Also on Waimea Mono Home Road, like Miss said, too much speeding. Go wait till somebody die for somebody, get up and do something. We shouldn't be waiting, we gotta be proactive. We need speed bumps. I don't, make 'em high as you can, or then for slow down, or you make 'em, you know, like them small ones, but high, you know? That would boom, 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 oh, okay. But if you make the big, large, smooth ones, oh. I seen it in Wainai, they did that down in Wainai and Anakuli, that don't even work. So what you guys need to do is, either put guard rail in the middle, right? So they know how to stay in their lane also. Well, please put speed bump, because yes, our children are precious. Our kupunas are precious. I don't know about y'all, but I wanna make sure my dad get home from walking up to Seven Eleven down on LeHua, and God bless him, he's eighty-five, going strong. He doesn't want us to walk the kids to school no more, because of these reasons. So if we can get some speed bump going, make it big, however you wanna do it, hey, they'll slow down, because LeHua Elementary, back then, they used to sign wave, right? Slow down, shocker, please slow down for our children. But it's not only for our children, for everybody in the community. Stop everybody from, you know, trying to spe- stop speeding. And yes, Miss, you are right, we need more officers out there, 'cause when they see officers, everybody step on their brakes. Sometime you're telling 'em, can you hurry up? The speed is twenty, not fifteen. But when they see officers, they know to follow the law. Thank you so much, God bless you all. It's a good turnout, my first time, thank you, Mr. Larry, for inviting me.
And I personally, and I personally wanna thank you for what you do for Pearl City High School with security and being the eyes and ears for the principal. Thank you, we, we hear you loud and clear, and, uh, stand by. Any otherbody wants to come up, please, please come on up to the mic? Please?
Good evening. My name is Janice Psyke, and I'm a member of the First Baptist Church, Pearl City, located on Ho'oulaulea Street. This is a new experience for me, first time, so please bear with me. And I, as I speak on behalf of our church, and especially important for the students at Highlands Intermediate School, joining me tonight are concerned church members and school members. We attend tonight's meeting, team's meeting, to share our concerns on the issue of increasing speed, like everybody's saying. The number of speeding cars that have displayed disregard for the existing crosswalk, uh, which is extremely faded, for one thing, if you were to notice, and the unsafe conditions on Ho'oulaulea Street between our church and Highlands Intermediate School. We have had several misses where vehicles have come to a screeching halt within a few feet of our members crossing the street on Sundays. And while they're in the crosswalk, this is happening, as well as cars that have crashed into our property, and speeding has been the issue. And then on school days, I have witnessed the dangerous situation of students having to peek out beyond parked cars and to dart across the street when it's safe to do so. We are here to voice our concerns with you and to request that something be done before someone is seriously hurt. We feel that this is our first step in doing something as an action towards resolving these problems. We want to inquire about the possibility, as well as the process of installing raised crosswalks or speed bumps in place of the existing crosswalk. I thank you for your kind attention and for listening about our concerns. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Psyke. And HPD, uh, you want anything to say at this point here with, uh, we've had the speed issues come up?
Yeah, no, I did note, um, all the speeding down. So, um, we have a staff meeting this Friday, so I'll bring it up at the staff meeting, and we'll see if we can get some, uh, enforcement teams out there at all of these spots, so I got the Ho'iki'i, Momilani, ProCity High School, um, and the, between the church, Highlands Intermediate, and, uh, it's, uh, Ho'oumai Mai, right? Yeah, so I, I noted all of them down. I'll bring it up at the staff meeting, and we'll come up with a plan on what we can do with, with this, but, um, of course, it's basically, it's Waimea Mono Home Road and, uh, the cross streets in, uh, this ProCity area, so. Yeah, and, and we'll take action, yeah. Um, we'll for sure, uh, um, put together speed enforcement teams and, uh, and concentrate on this for now. So, I'll get back to you on the next meeting. Uh, we do have a new Lieutenant Keone Hong that he might be on, but, um, we communicate with each other, so definitely we'll get, uh, results by the next meeting.
Okay, Lieutenant, thank you very much, uh, I would like to set up a meeting with you with a few, uh, selected members, so we can put together a plan of action, engagement plan. This has gotta be using multiple sources. You know, HPD can't do it all by themselves. The community has got to be engaged in this. Education, and also, uh, looking at maybe with the city, because if, I know if you notice up in Halava, they put in delineators to slow down the traffic on the main, main road to Camp Smith. They've had that for a long time, and it really slows down, 'cause people don't wanna scratch their cars. You could just barely get the bus and the handy van through there, but it works. Uh, the other thing is in the future, for those of you that have attended our previous Pearl City Board meetings, the city will be coming in to do some, uh, uh, changes to Waimea Mono Home Road in the future, from Koma Mai Drive all the way down, uh, to, uh, Cam Highway. Uh, there'll probably be some road, road down to Kamamia Highway. And, and it'll, we, uh, road diets probably put in, you know, to help slow people down, but traffic probably get worse. But, uh, this has got our attention now, you definitely brought it to us. We, we will put this in writing to both our, our City Council, HPD, and our legislators, because they're probably behind the scenes right now thinking, what kind of laws can go in place that we can improve this? So just to let you know, just, thank you for coming forward to bring it to our attention. We prioritize every board meeting. You got our attention, this is a top priority. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, who do we have? Tara Sutton on, uh, virtual, are you there? Tara Sutton? There you are, come on on.
Um, I just wanted to reintroduce myself. I don't know if people remember me from previous announcements, but I'm Tara Sutton with the Red Hill Registry through the University of Hawaii Omanoa. And, um, I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of this resource. Um, if you haven't heard of it before, this is a crucial effort to track and address the long-term health impacts of the Red Hill fuel spill on our community. The goal is to ensure that anyone affected, um, has, uh, awareness and access for vital resources and support for now and in the future. Uh, we are currently on our beginning planning phases of establishing the framework for the registry, so this is a critical time for us to stay connected and engaged with the community. Um, for anybody who wants to, uh, subscribe, we have a website, what, uh, you can find it at redhillregistry.org, and you can subscribe for email updates as we put out, um, announcements. And we've also added a button on our website at the top right corner that says employment. So as we have positions that come available, um, to, uh, be part of the team as staff, then you can find those opportunities there. They'll, we'll be hiring from across the UH system and the university health partners. So if you were to look for the jobs individually, there'll be like, piece mail all over the place, but this'll be a, a one-location, one-stop shop where you can find. There's currently one position that's open still for three more days, and that is for our Operations Coordinator. It closes on the thirtieth, so if that's something anybody here, or if you know someone, is interested in redhillregistry.org. If you have any questions about the registry, you can contact me. My email address is T Sutton, for my name, at redhillregistry.org, and I'd be happy to answer anything unless anyone has questions now. And that's all.
Okay, Tara, thank you very much. You have a question? Okay.
Hey Tara, what's the source of funding for Red Hill Registry?
The funding came through a grant, it's twenty-seven million dollars, uh, roughly, to estimate, but it came, it's ordered through the NDAA, and it comes through the, I'm gonna have to pull up my notes, but it's the Uniformed Services, let me grab it right here. Wasn't prepared for that one, but I have it open on my computer. It's the, um, National Center for Disaster Medicine and Public Health, which is based out of the Uniformed Services University at the Health Sciences. Um, the grant is, comes, before it came to them, it was from the, um, Department of Defense.
Thank you. All right, Tara, thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Okay. Yeah, Guy, we'll get to you in a second here. Would I like to do, we're honored here to have Lance Tenoya from Pearl City Highlands Elementary School here. Lance, you got it.
Hello, thank you, Board. My name is Lance Tenoya, Highlands Intermediate School, new principal here. Uh, I wanna echo some of the same concerns that the church, um, spoke to. Uh, raised crosswalks, again, our, our students are definitely needing that safety. Also, I'd like to recommend some delineators, like you spoke to a little bit earlier. Um, left turn into our school is definitely something that slows down traffic, and if we could do those two things, I think we keep our students a lot more safe. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lance, and, uh, when I have that meeting, you'll be invited to it. Okay, go ahead there, uh, Cooney, you had a question?
Yeah, I do. Um, do you guys have junior police officer program?
Not at the intermediate school.
Do you think it might help you guys out? And even at the elementary school?
Maybe at elementary schools, we could look into that.
Do you guys have it at the elementary school?
Uh, I can't speak to what Highlands CPO. Yeah, they may have it at, yeah.
Elementary, you guys got 'em. They're good. Yeah. Cause, um, well, you know, I wanted to adjust that with the officer. Um, there is a difference between old Pearl City and new Pearl City. So if you were here before nineteen sixty-seven, that is when we, you know, um, my family moved in here in, uh, nineteen sixty. So we were part of old Pearl City, the last Momilani suburb.
And for some of the people here.
Yeah. So we moved in there. So the difference between old Pearl City and new Pearl City is that old Pearl City does not have sidewalks. So right behind you, these houses over here came around nineteen sixty-seven, nineteen sixty-eight. So those were the first sidewalks that were installed. So the homes behind you is the, is the model homes. So that's a difference. But the, the difference between the kids, the dangers, that's a, you know, the danger of the kids walking to school is that in new Pearl City, you have sidewalks. In old Pearl City, you don't. And I rec, I, you know, give you guys a lot of credit for have that crossing guard over there on your sidewalk by the Baptist church, 'cause I make my run every Sunday morning, and I go past there. But the other thing that, that kinda, you know, and I, I'm, I'm wondering if Gene Albano is here tonight, because we just had some construction work done right over here on Koma Mai. And they have beautifully painted lines, double solid lines. Funny, I've been on this board for one year, and we- Funny, I've been on this board for one year and we still never get Waimea Home Road relined. Keep up the work.
Okay, well, thank you very much. If there are any other community concern, Guy Enoy?
Thank you very much, Chair Veray. So I guess, you know, when we were talking about Waimea Home Road up, I guess going on three, four years already when we talked about smart cities. Tried to get that crosswalk removed from Nanakai because there's no way on earth that anybody can stop while coming down Waimea Home Road and somebody takes a step onto that crosswalk fronting Nanakai Street. So I just wanted to go on record for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. We'll put that in the, to the issues when we have the meeting. Okay, any other questions? If not, we're a little bit behind schedule. I want to get the meeting going a little quicker. We're going to move into our board business. And the first thing that we have on our agenda is a recognition for outgoing board member, remember Mr. Dion Mesta, who's been with us for four years and regretfully, he's moving on to other things. And Dion, can you please come forward by the microphone? And if you notice, I got a male dominant board here. Sorry, I'm the one that's gonna lay you. Okay, and our recognition committee, Tony Valesko. Tony, you want to take the honors and read the certificate of recognition that we have for Dion?
Don't get missed here, Tony. It's okay.
On behalf of Pro City Neighborhood Board Number 21 and the Neighborhood Commission, we hereby present this certificate of recognition to Mr. Dion Mesta for a truly outstanding leadership and service to the community while serving as a member of the Pro City Neighborhood Board Number 21 for the past four years. Specifically, you serve vice chair, secretary, and as a key member for the Pro City Neighborhood Board, providing very informative and details of community issues during our board meetings. You served on the legislative and capital improvement and development planning and zoning committees where you provided input to the committee chair, which produced board resolutions stating our requirements for improving the quality of life for all our residents in Pro City. You are also instrumental in providing accurate and technical input to several board resolutions and outgoing official letters to congressional representatives, state legislators, city council, and the mayor's office. With heartfelt thanks, we thank you for your past four years of leadership and service. Mahalo Nui Loa. Thanks, Dion.
Dion?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh. Okay, so I prepared a 45-minute speech on top of your long agenda. I want to thank everybody here. It truly has been an honor serving our community, especially alongside such great members of the neighborhood board. It has been a pleasure and an honor working alongside you all. I've learned a lot and I appreciate you and I know that Pearl City is in good hands. I'd like, you know, I'd probably say this was goodbye, but I'm pretty sure I'll see you folks around the community and other, you know, community organizations and civic organizations. So this really is till next time. Thank you very much and thank you for this certificate. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dion. Hey, you notice on there, there's a package. So as we're shaking hands right here, the second item on the agenda, we have Dion's position to fill. And because of all fairness from this board, we've only had three to seven days' notice for this to get out to the community. We're going to hold till next month in to see how many citizens would like to be on the Pearl City Neighborhood Board. So please come next month and make yourself known that you'd like to be a member of the board. And of course, next year, elections come into place again in June. Actually, elections start in April. April, May? July? In June, July timeframe, yeah. Okay, moving on with the agenda. Okay, this is election of our executive officers. The chair, the vice chair, secretary, treasurer. Normally, we do this in July to start the new term, but we went into recess last month, so it's moved over to this month. So at this point, I'd like to ask for any nominations for the chair? Are there any nominations?
Chair? I'd like to nom, is this for chair? I think you said chair. Is that correct? Okay. I'd like to nominate Larry Veray to continue as chair.
Okay, I accept that. Is there any other nominations? I've been in this position for eight years. Come on, guys. My wife says, "Take me home." Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close the nominations and I'm gonna turn this over to the NCO rep. This is Hanson.
When I call your name, please say Veray for chair. Okay, Agard? Yes? Awong? Doran?
Veray.
Enoy?
Veray for chair.
Lee?
Veray for chair.
Okay. Smith? Takeuchi?
Veray for chair.
Valesko?
Veray for chair.
And Veray. Okay, Chair, are you still chair?
Okay, tell you what, you go with the mic. Go ahead and take the next one.
Okay, we're doing. Hello? Hello, okay. Okay, now we're doing for vice chair. Is there any nominations for vice chair?
Charmaine Doran. Vice chair.
Is there any nominations or that's all? Or Charmaine Doran? Okay, so we're going to close nominations. Okay, when I call your name, please say Doran. Okay, Agard? Awong? Charmaine?
Doran?
Enoy?
Doran for vice chair.
Lee? Okay, Smith? Takeuchi?
Doran?
Okay, Valesko?
Doran for vice chair.
And Veray. Okay, Charmaine Doran is still vice chair for the, for the personally, Bert. Okay, now for the secretary position. Is there any nominations?
Tony Valesko.
Tony Valesko, are you okay with the, for being secretary?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. Is there any nomination? There's no? Okay. When I call your name, please say Valesko for the secretary position. Okay, Agard?
Valesko for the secretary position.
Okay, Awong? Okay, Doran?
Valesko for secretary.
Okay, Enoy?
Valesko for secretary.
Lee?
Valesko.
Art? Oh, wait. Smith? Takeuchi?
Valesko?
Valesko?
Valesko.
And Veray.
Valesko.
Okay, Tony Valesko is the secretary still. Now this. Hello, okay, this, the treasurer position. Is there any nominations?
Guy Enoy for treasurer.
Is there any other further nominations? Nope. Okay, I'll close nominations and when I call your name, please say Enoy for treasurer. Agard? Doran?
Enoy for treasurer.
Enoy?
Enoy for treasurer.
Lee?
Veray for treasurer.
Smith? Takeuchi?
Enoy for treasurer.
Valesko?
Enoy for treasurer.
Veray.
Enoy.
Okay, so our executive committee pretty much remains the same with Tony Valesko as our new secretary. Can I get a hand for all of them? Okay, moving on for other administrative that we have to do. The location where we have our meetings, the time, the place, and the recess months. And right now, just to explain, the time that we have, seven o'clock, it is, it's really the best time that we can try to find that medium for all the families and our elected officials to meet us. If we move it up to six o'clock or 6:30, we're in the traffic, it's hard for them to get out of the legislature to get down here in time for meeting. So my apology if that seven o'clock doesn't meet with you, but the place here, we've got a great privilege to use. The Mō Milani Community Center. They've put a lot of faith in us. We have the keys to the facility, very flexible, and the prices is very reasonable. And of course, our recess months, board members, we routinely taken off in December for the holidays for our families and also in June kicking off the season when the kids get out of school. So what I'd like to recommend, if I can get a motion, we keep everything the same as last previous term, the time, the place, the recess months. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Solved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, if there are narrow objections, any objections? None? Okay, it stays the same. Okay, and we do have committees assigned from last year. Normally, we go through the whole motion. It takes a lot of time to do that. Oh, I'm sorry. Tony's keep me on track here. The adoption of oral testimony. I read that at the beginning of the meeting. What I'd like to do is keep it the same until the NCO makes recommendations for us to change it. So at this time, can I get a motion to keep our oral testimony rules as is? And can I get a motion to approve that to keep it the same?
Solved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any objections? See none? Okay, we stay the same. And then lastly, when we started our new term after elections, we put together committees. Everybody that you see here is part of a committee on the board and especially the leadership of each of those, you know, with department planning and permitting, Legislative Affairs, Traffic and Transportation Committee, Recognition, Parks and Recreation, all those different areas. We don't normally have a lot of meetings to do those things, except you will see the Traffic and Transportation Committee stand up because we will make those announcements to bring you in to testify for that. But when we have big community issues, then you see us form and we even do special meetings as a Pearl City Neighborhood Board. But right now, what I'd like to recommend for the board, you know, we established all those committees. I'd like to keep those the same. We also have a representative for the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Operations, the Citizens Advisory Committee. Charmaine Doran and I have been the members for those committees. And of course, for the Pearl Harbor Restoration and Restoration and, Guy, what's B stand for? I forgot. Advisory Board.
Advisory Board.
The Advisory Board. Guy has been that representative. And of course, you know that the Pearl Navy is trying to clean up, you know, from past years mistakes with the dumping that they did around the area. There's a big, a big push to clean the Ina and let's get that cleaned up together. So anyway, board members, can I get a motion to keep our committees the same? They don't change with Dion going out the door. To keep them the same as they were last term. Can I get a motion? Okay, Rodney, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any objections? See none? Okay, that makes it easy. That's a half hour right there we just saved. Okay, the next thing is a letter to the Department of Education. Vice Chair, do you want me to defer this one? This is the one, I believe, that, the one on bus routes. If you guys know, thanks to Department of Education, they jumped in and established new bus routes. When we started working, it's three weeks ago, we had a lot of complaints coming in from the families. Now some of those bus routes are back again. So I'm going to defer that letter. Resolution requesting the city expand pool hours and in Pearl City. Vice Chair, do you want to read that resolution?
Sure, I'm going to read the title and just the real key points. So this resolution requests that the city and county of Honolulu explore expanding pool hours in the Pearl City area. And just the real key points. Central, which is what we're a part of for recreation, we have no pool in Pearl City right now that is open evenings or weekends. And I think the Takai Aquatic Center in Waikela or Waipio is the only, the closest pool and that just offers about an hour and a half of lap swim. So we don't have any evening and free hour swims. And I broke down and it took a lot of time to go district by district. That spreadsheet is on our Google Drive and I think we are unique in that we don't have a pool in weekend or evening hours. But that said, move to approve?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Rodney, second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Rodney, go ahead.
Charmaine, is it because we don't have regular lifeguards that the pool hours are shortened?
Chair, is it okay that I respond to that?
Yes, go ahead and respond.
Yeah, I talked to the lifeguards. They think a lot of things are going on here and there. Yeah, we don't, maybe our lifeguards in our district are not funded like they should be. So this resolution asks for the city to look at funding lifeguards more in the future. But I also think that our district in particular has gone through some changes as far as demographics and we might be a little bit younger than we were a decade ago. And so now there might be a little bit of a need for different hours.
Okay, so my question would be, would junior lifeguard suffice?
I don't want to answer for the city, but maybe the city could answer that.
Okay.
Yeah, Rodney, we'll reach out to them. Like, you know, last year we went through this and we were so lucky because one of the senior lifeguards actually went out and recruited in other areas and pulled those lifeguards to Pearl City. So we made it through the summer having that lifeguard support. So go ahead, Dion.
Yeah, just a brief commentary. I think that the city can improve its recruiting. And because I checked with, for example, West Oahu Student Employment Office, there was no listing for lifeguards in the UH system that many campuses use. And also there was no listing at the Pearl City High School Student Employment Office. You can be a 16, minimum age is only 16, which is reasonable, you know, people are going to be strong at 16, pulling out of the pool. So I think we want to encourage the city better job of recruiting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion questions? Okay, see none? Call for the vote.
Okay, when I call your name, please say yes, no, or abstain. Agard? Awong? Charmaine?
Yes.
Enoy?
Yes.
Lee? Smith? Takeuchi?
Yes.
Yes? Valesko?
Yes.
And Veray?
Yes.
Okay, that's. That's nine votes. It's about it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. The next item on the agenda is an outgoing letter from the Pearl City Neighborhood Board to DTS, the Department of Transportation Services, for Pearl City Shopping Center's request for a permit to hold the Christmas parade. on December first, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay, so we got Rodney, Charmaine. Okay, any discussion? Okay, if there are no objections, any objections? We consider it approved. Okay, the next one is a letter approving, the letter from the Pearl City Neighborhood Board to the Department of Transportation Services on behalf of Pearl City High School's request for a permit to hold a homecoming parade on October fourth, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve? Hey, Cooney? You have a second? Okay. We got Aigart. Okay, and any discussion? Hear none? If there are no objections, any objections? It's approved. Okay, we're going to move on now. We have a special presentation. This is from Mr. Andrew Lewis, who wants to talk to us about UH Manoa's Pualoa Spring Ecosystem Restoration Project. And we have a jewel here in Pearl City that nobody, a lot of people don't know about. It's been covered up with weeds and trash. But there's actually a really nice stream that runs through Pearl City. Andrew, are you online? Oh, there you are. Okay, Andrew, you want to come up to the microphone? And do we have this PowerPoint? Good job. Andrew came a couple of months ago to our Pearl City Board meeting, talking about this. It really got us interested. So we're eager to hear what recommendations you have. And definitely, I'm glad we got a big community group here today, especially with the scouts, because his solution to his problem is getting community involved to help us restore that stream.
Yeah, thanks for letting me present. My name is Andrew Lewis. I'm a grad student and research assistant at the University of Hawaii Manoa, and I study Punahua freshwater springs. And so this is a picture of one of the springs in Pualoa, kind of right off the Pearl City or the bike path. Andrew, can you just talk like right into the bike? Okay, sorry. Yeah, okay, can everyone hear me now? Okay, so this is the spring right off Pearl, the Pearl City Bike Path. And it's overgrown right now with weeds and garbage. And the Rotary Club, the Pearl City Rotary Club, is doing a lot of really great work around the site. But I have some ideas that I want to get some community feedback with, how we can work together and restore this spring. There's a lot of, I'm sure everyone knows that this area was really rich in fish ponds, and it was really rich area for springs and cultural practices to take place at springs. So restoring this site, which is in really dire and sad state right now, would be great. Yeah, perfect. So this is what it looks like right now. There's a picture there that says, a sign there that says, Pualoa Spring. So one of the things I think would be really cool, if we could, I'm looking into historical maps, trying to find the traditional place name of that spring. There's a concrete box where the water flows over. It does seem like it's, my background's hydrogeology, so that's why I'm going to nerd out a little bit. But it does seem like it flows a lot more when it rains. So it's a fast-moving conduit for groundwater. And I'm sure there's also some stormwater runoff that goes into that as well. But you can see it flows through the beach and then goes into the harbor. Next slide. So my idea is to kind of fence off that area a little bit with, not with fence, but with kind of some puhaku and doing a wall around it, a short wall, to kind of contain the area where the spring comes out and putting a sensor in there and new signage that shows, kind of can educate community around the importance of springs, the cultural and ecological importance of springs, as well as being kind of a focal point. And there's a lot of other good restoration going around with the fish ponds in Pualoa and, you know, working together with these different community groups to educate people because this is a really high-trafficed area. You can see it's right next to the bike path. This is a great opportunity for us to work in this site and also maybe adding a sensor in there. Again, depending, I want feedback from the community, what they think is important, but something we can see on our phones, like, okay, the spring really dries up during this time of the year. Or another issue we see with springs that are at the basal lens is that they're getting saltier because of our groundwater pumping. So another sensor we can put in there to kind of have this data available to the public so we understand these different concerns, and we can go to legislature and tell them these concerns that we're having. Next slide. So the initial project ideas are to recruit some volunteers to haul away the garbage. Again, Rotary Club is doing some really great work around there. Remove a lot of the non-invasive species and then kind of transplant some of the native species that the Rotary Club has planted around the site and move them closer to the spring source. And install new signage, discharge and salinity sensors, like I mentioned before. And then obviously, coming up with a long-term stewardship plan for the site. That way, when, you know, we're gone, that this site can be protected. So I've got contacts at Leeward that seemed interested in incorporating this into some of their classroom activities, as well as community groups in the high schools. I know I've done work with the Rotary Club around there. Next slide. So these are the project partners that I'm thinking of. I've talked with somebody at the city and county of Honolulu Stormwater. I know they're really busy, so, you know, communication is not been that great. But I've been also in contact with some UH Manoa Landscape Architecture Department people who would be, can help kind of draw up a design with community to come up with a plan for this site. Again, it's a very small footprint of a site, which means we can really, you know, we're limited in that capacity, but it means we can really make it nice. And then Preserve and Protect Hawaii does the rock weaving. So they've shown interest in helping us create that puhaku wall. Next, yeah, I already mentioned that we can skip. Yeah, it's just some important components is having that data available to the public so we can understand what's happening. You know, ninety percent of our water here comes from groundwater and springs are lensed into the aquifers that we drink from. So these are really important ecosystems, you know, hydrologically, ecologically, and culturally. So a project that kind of incorporates all that, I think, would be really important. And again, I want the community's inputs and this process to be kind of developed from the ground up. So, yep, good with that slide. Those are just the sensors that I was thinking of, the wall, and then some plants. Next slide. Another idea is to kind of incorporate citizen science. So this is an idea that somebody else has done in, I don't know where, but it's a river. And you can kind of put your phone in there and take a picture of the spring site, and it's a fixed location. So you're actually able to merge those pictures over time, and you can see how the spring ecosystem has been changing during the different seasons when things are, when it's growing, when it's time to trim, or maybe we need to go back there. Oh, there was this picture of a big piece of garbage there. So another component that we can add into this project that is available to the whole community and can really help protect the ecosystem. Also, something like a giant ruler. I was on a project a while ago where I did storm chasing in Arizona, and we had these giant rulers that we would use to measure flow. So this can also be another component that we can use. Next slide. Yeah, I'm just trying to come up with the budget so that way I can start getting some money together, getting a grant together. So UH Foundation has shown interest in funding the project. And one thing that they really wanted was community support, which was, I was working on, so that was perfect. And I think with that in mind, I can go back to them, and hopefully, they'd be interested in funding this work. If not, I will go to other sources. And I think that's, yeah, so the design process is something that community can help us with. Next slide. Yep. Good. I think we're all set. And I think the last slide might have my email, so, yeah. That's a fish pond restoration. Obviously, this won't be a fish pond, but it can be something that can still be, you know, fit those important components that the community wants. So my email's up there. I guess I can take questions. I've got two minutes left, or email me, or I'll be around if you want to talk about the project.
Andrew, thank you very much for coming today. You need to stay up there. We're not letting you off easy. It's because the board's got questions for you. This is Hawaiian lands. There's questions.
So for your naming, you can check with Commitment Schools, has a lot of resources that probably already has that map. If it's not, then OHA. Or you can also check with Pearl Harbor Hawaiian Civic Club. Those three would be able to get you whatever you need as far as finding the traditional name for the area rather than just Punahua and Pualoa. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Brendan?
Could you mention Pearl Harbor Hawaiian Civic Club? I was going to ask, you have your community partners out there, but nowhere on there do I see this Association of Hawaiian Civic Clubs listed. Do you know who the Association of Hawaiian Civic Clubs is? So you've heard of the Aho Pohal markings around the island? The Association of Hawaiian Civic Clubs made that happen. So there's a civic club in this, and they're broken up in different districts across the island. This district and the spring that you're talking about falls on the Pearl Harbor Hawaiian Civic Club. So if you Google Association of Hawaiian Civic Club on the internet, it'll have all the club listings. Pearl Harbor Hawaiian Civic Club should absolutely be one of your partners since this is their one, because it has to do with our Ina and Pearl Harbor Hawaiian Civic, is the Hawaiian Civic Club that has Kulianna over this place. So you should absolutely contact them. And I was going to tell you as well, like Cooney said, Commitment Schools will know the name of the spring. They will have all of that already mapped out.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Brendan, thank you very much. Brendan's a great resource for a lot of this, a lot of these areas. I think, Vice Chair? Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, was this just the presentation? Or are you hoping in the future to get something official from the board?
Just reaching out to community to come up with a plan and get these resources. Yeah, the plan is definitely not totally figured out, and that's why I'm here. I want feedback and understanding what different components the community wants and different resources that I can use to make sure that this is something that is representative of everyone who will use the space.
Okay, can you just like keep, make sure that we get the information as you go along? So if any of us want to participate or, you know, kind of track your project, then we can directly.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Vice Chair, we'll take a look at possibly doing a resolution next month because I know when you're submitting grants, when you have that backing from the community, from the Pearl City Navy Board and also the legislators, that'll help you get that grant.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
But thank you so much. You know, there's a lot of, we're always looking at opportunities to improve Pearl City, but there's a lot of lost history here, you know, especially the cemetery here in Pearl City. We're going to see that revitalized or brought back. And we want to bring those key areas back, and this stream is very important, especially the fish pond. And maybe we can get some help from the wine eye guys to help us with the rock wall, put that in. Because Brendan's got his resources with Commitment Schools. But thank you for bringing this up, and we'll be in communication with you.
Great, thank you.
Any questions? Any more from the board? Hear none? Community? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on patiently, our legislators. For Governor Josh Green's office, Mr. Hickman, I didn't see him, but we do have our Honorary Joe Hafman, our Principal for Pearl City High School. Joe, would you like to come up? Jeff Hickman's there? Jeff, are you there?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
We got a lot of people on line today, and I missed it.
No worries.
Okay, you're up, you're up, Jeff.
All right, hey, first of all, thank you, Chair. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there in person, had a little family emergency, but all is good. I'm glad I'm able to join this way. I'm glad Principal Joe is there. He's my daughter's principal, my son's principal. And it was a big effort for me, and DOD really took it seriously, so did the governor's office when I said, hey, the Pearl City Neighborhood Board would really like a DOE rep. There'll be a lot of questions for him. He might not be able to answer all of them tonight, but he can take them back to the DOE. I did speak to my counterpart at the DOE and their public information, and she will take all of his concerns back and have it given to the correct person to address. So thank you, Board, for the patience, and mahalo, Principal Joe, for getting there. And you're on right after me. So my presentation today, I did talk to the governor's office, and there's no major announcements for me to put out. But are there any questions or issues that I can take back and research for the board or residents?
Board members, any questions for Mr. Hickman? No, I think everybody's pretty happy, waiting for money in the mail.
Oh, that's a, that's a good way.
Anybody from the, from the community? Any questions for our governor's rep? Hey? None? None right now?
Excellent. Okay, hey, thank you very much, Chair. Thank you very much, community. Please have a good rest of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Hafman, you're up.
Yes, thank you very much, Board. Joe Hafman, Principal at Pearl City High School, happy to be with you as the representative. I know, I understand, I have Mr. Hickman to thank for being here today, right? So I appreciate that. Just a couple of quick things before I open up and see if you have any questions. One is, we had a great start to the school year. I wanted to say thank you. We've got several big projects going on at Pearl City High School. That's where I'm most, have most information about. We have our electrical upgrade, which is kind of an ongoing multi-year project. We also have our fire alarm systems, been a few things in the news. And so that's actually operational at the Michael Dina Kasone Center. So we want to thank our legislators and all of the public support for some of those projects. We do have our Michael Nakasone, also the LED lights and the things that are going on within their aging. And so that project is now on the books, and we are beginning the process for those too. So we just want to say thanks to our, to our representatives and our senators, who are always at work. And a lot of the projects you'll see in Pearl City are due to a lot of their great work. So we appreciate that. I wanted to say thank you very much to the Board also for the homecoming. Specifically, I know Kyle Mishuro, the Student Activities Coordinator, is often here representing for that. And so we appreciate your support. It's a big event for us. It's important for our students as far as, you know, getting really that spirit up, especially after COVID. We continue to work on trying to bring back the spirit at Pearl City High School and across the state. So those parades are a big part of it. We really missed it when we couldn't have them, right? And so now we're happy, and so we appreciate your support. That's a big event coming up. So just a reminder for the Pearl City community, we will be having homecoming coming up that September the twenty ninth. This is when we kick off Powderpuff, right? It's the, always the kickoff for homecoming. So you'll start to see a lot more maybe traffic and things around Pearl City High School at that time. So it's all that week culminating on that Friday, October fourth, with a parade from 2:30 PM to 4:00 PM. Pearl City community is always great with a parade, very patient. We have people lining up and, you know, participating. And even the people who are disrupted in their commutes, they're usually super supportive and very patient, and so we really appreciate that. And I think that's the main things that I have and happy to bring back anything. To the Department of Education, I may not be able to have all the answers, but I'm happy to field any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Board members, any questions? Go ahead there, Dan.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. And I'll confess, I'm one of the agitators for somebody from DOE coming here. I mean, it's a huge part of the economy and so forth. So, and I have been pushing on the busing, the busing question. I think a lot of students and parents are disappointed when the city, the bus stopped serving the Nakasone Center. And it was alleged by some people at that time that the school was opposed to the busing. Would you be in favor of restoring some city busing to Pearl City High School?
Sure, absolutely. The Pearl City High School administration specifically has always been a proponent for keeping the city bus stop at the Nakasone Center. So there may be certain other folks within our Pearl City High School community who may, like, you know, again, in an argument, but Pearl City High School administration has always been supportive of keeping the bus stop at the Nakasone Center.
Okay, and related, related to that is that Representative Trish Lachica introduced a bill to force, encourage, force real coordination between the bus and the DOE school system, you know, frequent consultation, make the schedules match up by simple changes of routes. Larry and I proposed some stuff last year that were ignored by the, by the city in terms of adjusting the routes. And the limitations of the DOE are, of course, well described in the media. in the, in the, in the media. And I'll bring it up again with the city, but there's a, there's a problem with driving to school. The, uh, left turn at, uh, Como Mai onto Waimano Home Road is a source of potential accidents and, uh, a traffic jam. So I'll, I'll bring it up with the city. I think that between left turn lanes and, um, changes to the lights, it could, could make it work. And one of the other things for inviting somebody from DOE, and it could rotate, would be that, uh, if, if you, if you need some help, for us lobbying for things, we're happy to do it. Uh, I myself am a, uh, college educator. And, um, there will be, uh, some money coming from, uh, HECO for community impact, um, substantial money over a number of years. So if there are some things that you want and need, um, come to, come to the Neighborhood Board. And, um, I'll close by saying a lot of these, um, what do they call it? CTE certificates, very important in, in not just general ed college, early college, but get those, uh, get those certifications that are, that can really lead to employment, summer jobs, uh, careers. Uh, when I was in the university, we, some of us who worked in the volunteer student radio station, were getting these licenses from the federal communications. And so, why, why, and it was free, you just go, in those days, you just go take the tests, study, take the tests. And so why, why are we paying tuition here when we could take these certificates and be out and, and get a job? So, um, we greatly appreciate your coming and also the Principal from Highlands Intermediate, um, coming because, yes, speeding and stuff is a, is a, is a real concern. So thank you for coming out and also DOE people, let us know how you can, uh, how we can help you. And we will can, um, revive the, um, I'm, I'm the delinquent person on a resolution on, on busing. Because we need to get the regular coordination, uh, between all the buses, the busing companies, DOE and the bus to have, uh, shorter lines at, uh, in the morning and after school. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Two things on that. I think, uh, let me start with the easier one first, which one is we at Pearl City High School are an academy school now, and so 100% I agree with you on the certifications. It's a big part of our, um, like our, our big push even this school year is, is talking about equipping. And so a big part of our academy focus is equipping our students to be ready for post-high school, whether that be for college or sometimes just straight to career, right? And that includes those certifications that you're talking about. And it's one of the metrics we look at is trying to increase, and we are increasing the number of certifications that our students can get before they leave Pearl City High School. The second regarding transportation, I'm not really the expert there. I know, my understanding was, uh, Megan O'Meara from the Transportation Office might be logging on. In fact, I think I see her name on there. I don't know if she says anything that she wants to add about specifically maybe the coordination between, like I haven't heard a whole lot on that as far as coordination between city and county and those type of things. And so not sure if she would like to weigh in on those.
Kay, are you there?
Hello?
Okay, you got it.
Hi, good morning, uh, good afternoon, I mean evening, everyone. Um, sorry, I'm trying to get my computer to work. Um.
There you go, Megan, we see you now.
Um, just to kind of chime in on the transportation issues, um, we are working with city and county, um, to kind of review and understand how the traffic is going, what the demand is, um, for ridership on the city bus is, especially in the neighborhoods around and supporting the high schools on Oahu. Um, I think once things calm down a little bit, um, and we can start working on restoring more of the services that we had to suspend temporarily, um, we will be having discussions with city and county, um, further on those topics. So we do work closely with them on, um, just making sure that the routes that are in service are able to support the loads. And, um, we are working with our bus contractors as well with hiring. Um, again, the bus driver shortage is a major issue for all islands. And if you guys are interested in applying, um, Roberts and GTI are always hiring, so give them a shout.
Hey, thank you, Megan. Okay, uh, anything else?
That's it for me.
Charmaine Duran.
Actually, I have, I have a, um, question. I'm not gonna talk about school buses because not only have we talked about it so many times, but it was deferred. But I wanted to say thank you for attending. Um, and kind of a side note, I've been to a lot of DOE meetings. Not only am I a parent, but I have been to many, many, many bus meetings. Um, is it just because you work in this area that they assigned you to the Board and you happen to have a letter? Or do we, will we be, will you be attending all of our meetings in the future?
Um, I think, uh, overall, the agreement was, I think we're gonna try to find some type of rotation. It wasn't gonna be me all the time. So yeah, I'm not necessarily committing to every single one, but, but it is a great time. It's, I'd love to spend this time with you, and it's been great seeing a lot of people that, um, you know, some of my former students and of course employees here who're doing a great job. And so, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll see. We're gonna try to get a DOE represent. My understanding is that's the plan, is to try to get a rotation of DOE representatives here.
Yeah, um, we always want you to be here as somebody who works in our community and serves such an important role. But many of the questions that we have might be unfair to you and not maximize the Board's time and might be more appropriate for Megan or, um, Admin or one of those, um, many individuals to show up, maybe even online if it's too hard to come. But, you know, I'll send an email or maybe draft a personal letter expressing that it might be best to have an admin person because our relationship with you is much more one of support rather than, uh, you know, grilling you. Because that's what we much rather do, is support all of our, um, teachers and principals and all that. But thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, uh, any board members, uh, any other questions? Guy, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, uh, first question would be, um, you know, I hear a lot of, um, students that make up the Leeward Community College that are from Waipahu. That 10% of the Leeward Community student body is from Waipahu High School. So I was kind of wondering if Pearl City High School is the same kind of, um, agreement with, uh, Leeward Community College, that's one. Secondly is the, uh, one, um, I had brought up earlier, you know, with, with the oncoming of the rail, that instead of using, um, large buses to transport, you know, people to and from these areas, if they can use vans, you know, like vans that can hold up, uh, I don't know, eight, eight to 10 people, 12 people and so forth like that, if that can be used within the, uh, school routes as well as, uh, it's kind of off the wall, but I was thinking, you know, handy vans, you know, it's, it's perfect size, you know, when you only got like 10, 12, um, students, et cetera, like that, you know, riding a big bus that can hold about 40, 50, uh. So, but I, I don't know what the policy is to use a handy van, so to say, but, you know, they can be retrofitted to have regular seats, uh, to accommodate students. So just those two questions, please.
Sure, so let me start with the, um, let's start with the van question first. It is definitely something that we've considered as well as other high schools in particular, is using 16-passenger vans, both for, I think mainly for things like, um, field trips and other types of sporting events. Because right now, bus transportation, not only for school, uh, transportation for to and from school, but also to any athletic event as well as field trips are extremely expensive. And so we're still considering all the different possible options as alternatives for that. Of course, maintaining a fleet or several 16-passenger vans is not also, it's got its own challenges. And so, um, at this time, we haven't really began the process of, um, actually implementing anything like that. Though I know a few of our high school partners have done so. Um, regarding LCC, I don't have the numbers, they are a big partner for us. We have a lot, our college-going rate is, is, uh, strong at Pearl City High School, but a lot of our kids attend UH West Oahu as, and, and Leeward. Uh, they're our big partners for early college. We had more early college this past school year than any year combined. Uh, I don't know combined, but any year before and over double two years ago. So, um, so we have, uh, we've, you know, got quite a bit of early college students going to Leeward as well as UH West Oahu. But we also have students going across, uh, across the US as well as Hawaii as well. So, um, I could try to find out the numbers for later. I don't know if it's 10%, like Waipahu's, they're a little bit bigger than we are, but, uh, but yeah.
Well, I guess the reason why I commented about, you know, 16-passenger type or even 10 or 12-passenger vans, so to say, is because, uh, perhaps, you know, the city bus themselves can ramp up in those areas, right? Where they have these, you know, himongo things, like essentially coming up palisades. And, uh, you got like, seriously, like two, three riders, you know, at the last run. Anyway, something like that, you know, I, I mean, if you don't, if you don't make noise about it, it's not gonna happen. So I guess that's, that's my reason for bringing up the topic. And I brought this up at least about six or seven years prior to even the rail, saying that, hey, you know, palisades is huge, but they're, a bus only goes through a perimeter. And people like me, I mean, they're right on Alahu Street in the middle. And, uh, walking to and from is, is, is not, yeah, at my age, that is, uh, is very difficult. And it's all, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Guy. Okay, uh, community, any questions? Seeing nothing? Oh, okay, Dan, one more time, we gotta get moving.
Chief, I commented, it came up at the, uh, fairly recent, um, House hearing, Education Department here, Education Committee hearing, was creating some positions where, uh, bus drivers could get, say, part-time employment with the, with the school system. So, uh, mine might have, you know, juggled, juggled that a little bit, um, consider some options to make the, uh, positions, uh, a little more attractive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe, I think that's it. Uh, I think we're gonna transition over to Casey Abi and then that'll finish up. But thank you so much, Joe. Okay, moving on, Casey, are you online?
Yes, I am, or I hope you can see my screen, Chair. Can you see my screen?
We're, we don't see it yet.
Oh, I don't see it yet? Okay, let me try this again. Okay.
Okay, we got it.
Oh, you got it? Oh, okay, wait, let me try it again. Wait, no, can you see it?
Yep. Hey, we got you.
Okay, you see it? Okay, all right, uh, good evening, I'm Chair Verre, members of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, uh, Casey Abi from the State DOT Highway Division. I want to thank Senator Alafonte for his May 22nd email about the overgrowth along Command and Highway, King Calmont Street and Poole Pointe Street. Um, it took our maintenance crew a while, but they finally cut back the overgrowth. I also want to thank, uh, Senator Alafonte for his August 7th email about a hole in our fence under each one freeway between Cool, Kuleana Road and Poole Pointe Street. I did a quick field check and found these two holes. Um, our maintenance crew did repair, uh, both holes during a quick field, but, but during a quick field check yesterday, I noticed one of the repair holes was damaged again, so I'll be working with our maintenance crew to repair the hole again. I'll also ask our maintenance crew to remove the metal I-beam that is used to cross the drainage ditch by probably homeless people. And, uh, finally, uh, on, on the front page of the June 21st Star Advertiser, the State DOT settled a lawsuit called Navahini versus State DOT with a group of young plaintiffs, many of them high school students, who accuse the State DOT of not doing enough to address the greenhouse gas emissions that is causing climate change and ruin their future livelihood and their right to a clean and healthy environment. The lawsuit was filed back on June 1st of 2022. The settlement affirmed the DOT commitment to implement transformative changes in, in Hawaii's transportation system with the goal of achieving net zero emissions by 2045 across all transportation modes, highways, harbors, airports, and within the state. The group of Hawaii plaintiffs, with the support of our children's trust and birth justice, claim the state's per capita greenhouse emission from Hawaii's transportation sector are rising and anticipated to, uh, make up 60% of the state's greenhouse gas emission by 2030. Some of the requirements the State DOT will implement as part of the settlement agreement are, within a year, DOT will create a greenhouse gas reduction plan, showing how Hawaii's transportation system will become more environmentally friendly over the next 20 years. The plan will include five-year benchmarks and performance metrics for years 2030, 35, 40, and 45. These five-year interim targets will include reducing vehicle mileage travel, reducing the number of single, uh, occupancy vehicles, expand multimode transportation options like public transit, pedestrian pathways and bikeways, adding more public charging stations for electric vehicles, and increasing the use of zero-carbon alternative fuel like hydrogen for ground, air, and marine transportation. HDOT will be incorporating the complete street policy and information about complete street improvements for each project will be readily available to the public. HDOT will produce an annual report compiling the individual projects and detailing its progress in reducing greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle mileage travel. HDOT will plant at least 1,000 trees every year to help draw down the carbon in the atmosphere. And whenever feasible, where feasible, plant native trees and shrubs. And HDOT will develop and implement a program for public education, outreach, and community engagement and partnerships to support our greenhouse gas reduction plan and related transportation decarbonization work. Additional information will provide, will be provided at future neighborhood meetings. This is a major transportation shift for the State DOT, especially the Highway Division. We hope to partner with the Neighborhood Boards and our elected officials on successfully implementing this multi-year settlement. This concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey, and thank you for you and, uh, Senator Alafonte for the, uh, observations of areas that needed to be beautified along our transit routes in Pearl City. Thank you. Board members, any questions? Go ahead, Dan. I don't think it's working. Grab the other mic.
The, I've noticed the, uh, the bridges, uh, along the Pearl City, uh, I'm sorry, Pearl Harbor Trail path are, are, are almost done. Are, is, is it gonna finish that project soon and maybe a little ceremony at the end?
Okay, uh, let, let me go check back on the status and I'll report back next month. That should, it should be almost done.
Okay, Board members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, community? Any questions? Seeing none. Casey, thank you very much, and, uh, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna be moving along here, it's, uh, 8:30. Uh, now we get into our reports from our state legislators. Okay, Senator Wakai, are you online? Is the representative? Nope, not online. Okay, we do have Senator Brendan Alafonte. Welcome, Senator, as always.
Great evening, Chair Verre, Vice Chair Duran, members of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, and to our scouts, thank you so much, and the parents for being here and getting engaged in government, really appreciate it, and to the general public. Um, Brendan Alafonte from the State Senate, I don't have much to report, other than a few follow-ups. I'll start with that first, um, that I heard from tonight. So the first one is, uh, Chucky, thank you for coming and, um, sharing your concern regarding OKK Street and some other areas in Pearl City. Rep Takayama and I are working with Principal Hoffman to see what we can do to have, um, speed humps or speed bumps on whole KK Street, as that is a state road. As far as the other roads that were shared here tonight, I know there were some members from the Church, uh, Cross of Highlands Intermediate. I would encourage them to work with their city council member, which would be Councilmember Okimoto and her staff, and I'm not sure if they're online, but hopefully they were listening and can, can work with the community on that. But as far as OKK Street, that's something we've been working in, and we've been hearing concerns about speeding, uh, in that particular area. And then, lastly, um, the flyer I passed out to you, Board members, those that are virtually online, um, Taylor from my staff will be sending you a link. We're having our upcoming town hall, and for members of the public, we have a few copies here on the welcome table, so please take one home. It's gonna be on traffic and transportation, so it looks like this. And it's gonna be on September 11th, and it's gonna be at 6:30 to 8:00 PM. It's a joint transportation. It's a joint transportation, if you recall, we do these uh quarterly, and this is in collaboration with the I A L and Pearl City delegation. So Rep Chan, Rep Takayama, Councilmember Cordero, and Councilmember Okimoto are the co-sponsors, they're they're leading um this event, which is on traffic and transportation. So we'll have members from the Department of Transportation, uh, City Department of Transportation Services, and then Hart, if you have any questions on skyline or any of those issues. So uh please come in, attend, uh, we welcome um your feedback and come in and listen in and uh, you know, also for the Pearl City other area senators would be Senator Wakai and Senator Aquino, who are also co-sponsors. So they're all listed there. Um, and that concludes my report, and happy to take any questions, thank you.
Senator, thank you very much for all very important updates, Pearl City. Uh, board members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, community? Can you please come up to the microphone, because that way everybody could hear you? You're you're on O'Lo Land.
I have a question for Mister, if he, um, not question, but please remember uh Lehuwa Avenue for Lehuwa Elementary. Um, and also, my mono home road, yes, please, this speeding gotta stop if we can get like sister here said, or her, speed bombs as high as whatever, you know, or guardrails, that'd be good because it's not only for our children, but for our kupunas and for everybody, safety for everybody. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Because he said my name.
And we and we hear you loud and clear.
If I if I can just quickly respond to you, like, no, thank you, I mean, that's all of concern, but, you know, as a Pearl City delegation, we we have different parts of the district, so we usually give deference to that, um, so for Lehuwa, I know Principal uh Tenoy, who's the Highlands Principal, was at Lehuwa, and that's something he worked hard with. So I'll defer to Rep Takayama and the other area folks that have that, and in the area council member with jurisdiction on that. But we all work together, and we do the best to resolve some of the issues, so thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Senator Henry Aquino, not here tonight, but his representative is.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair Duran, board members, my name is Nathana Lise, uh, representing Senator Aquino this evening. Um, I do stand by my reports, but also I do have a few copies on the table over there as well. If you do have any questions, just let me know.
Okay, please, by regard, citizen.
Thank you, Chair.
And everybody heard it, his handout uh is on a back table for you all. Okay, any questions for uh Senator Aquino's office? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Representative Greg Takayama, welcome, sir.
Hello, everyone, uh, just to add to what Senator um Alafonte talked about, um, welcome citizens and and Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. You know, this is really a democracy, democracy with a small d in action, uh, you know, citizen complaints and um responses. So it's it's good to see so many people here. Um, the number one complaint that we get is state legislators deal with um our city streets. Um, they're city streets, most of them in our neighborhoods, but uh, you know, we do what we can to work with um our council members as well. One exception, Okeakee, in front of Momilani and Pearl City High School is actually still a state road. Um, the city never accepted it uh from the developer, so um it lapsed then to the state. So we're trying to get speed humps installed there, trying to get support from Principal Halfman and the Momilani Principal to advocate for speed humps as well as um Chair Veray. So I think all of us together, um, by putting in a request for it, um, the State D O T will will hopefully take action. So we're waiting on on that kind of letters of support. Two things I wanted to mention, um, most recently, um, Sunset Memorial Cemetery was in the news because a few days ago, Governor Green signed into law, into law, uh, legislation that um actually turns over management of the cemetery to the Friends of Sunset Memorial Cemetery. This first time, the first time I can ever recall um an abandoned private property being turned over by government to a community group to manage. Um, so Friends of Sunset Memorial Cemetery is gonna do what the government cannot, and that's number one, it'll have the authority to evict trespassers, and number two, it'll have the opportunity to apply for grants um for fencing and other security measures. So big shout out to um Chair Veray, who is also wearing another hat as uh head of um Friends of Sunset Memorial Cemetery. He has his work cut out for him. Um, second thing I wanted to mention is that this past Saturday, the Hawaii Food Bank uh sponsored a food collection drive um here in Pearl City. It was down at Pearl City uh Shopping Center. But I wanted to mention this and share it with the board because the um president and CEO of the Hawaii Food Bank stopped by. And I chatted with her, and she told me something interesting. Um, as you know, Food Bank has collection sites every year, Pearl City, um, Kakao, Kailua, all over the island. But she told me that for as long as she can remember, the number one um most giving site is Pearl City. Out of all the sites on Oahu, the number one site for donations of canned goods and money, Pearl City every year. So another reason to be proud to live in Pearl City. Thank you, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Representative Takayama, thank you so much, and just for the community here, I just want you to know, we are so privileged to have a very cohesive legislative team. Notice I worded use that team. We we work very close with them, and thank goodness our our vice chair keeps pushing out those resolutions. And we're coming up with uh in the next few months, uh, we'll have our priority list of all legislative priorities that we're gonna hand to them. And those priorities come from all of you. Now, traffic's gonna be right there at the top for these issues. We need creativity, we need innovativeness, and we need our resources. These are the guys that are gonna help us out. Sunset Memorial Park Cemetery. Greg, I can't thank you enough, you and uh Senator Alafonte, uh, Corey Chung, uh, with uh Henry Aquino, and and especially with Glenn Wakai with his creative ideas. Uh, that cemetery has to be turned around, and I just want you to know, he said I had a second half. Well, the way to fix that problem, you gotta be hands-on. So I was elected president of the nonprofit, but at the same time, I have seven female leaders on it, and they're all proven, we we're set up for success. We've already got our first grant from Alexander. That fence will next week, water gets turned on, thanks to B W S. Uh, Kathleen came through with her representative, uh, soon we'll have electricity, we'll be able to put security cameras in. Selected board members will be helping monitor the cemetery at night, and we're gonna break, we're gonna take care of those families. I'm gonna have a special meeting coming up in September where all the legislators will be there uh to talk to all the families. We'll have over a hundred people, I know. They are gonna tell us what they want in the cemetery. Three years, we're gonna turn that cemetery around, I guarantee you. So thank you so much, Greg, board members, any questions? Perchall, any questions? Okay, we got a hand up for Casey, you got your hand up?
Yeah, uh, I just wanna thank uh Representative Takayama for clarifying that uh O K Street in front of Pearl City uh High School belongs to the State D O E, and but the State Department of Transportation is willing and able to assist in installing the speed humps and raise crosswalks whenever we get the go-ahead or approval from the D O E with um elected officials. So we're we're standing by, thank you.
Okay, community, any questions for Representative Takayama? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Okay, moving on, Representative Free Chan.
Hey, good evening, board members, community members. Um, I know it's getting late, so I'll really be brief uh in my report, I just handed it out, but just want to mention, you know, while the legislature's not in session, we're still doing a lot of work on your behalf. So one of the things that I'm still working on uh is our long-term care issues. So one of the things I've talked about earlier this year with legislation that passed and the governor signed into law was Act one fifty-nine, which was taking a look at a a long-term care master plan. So come to find out, the last time the state has done a long-term care master plan was back in nineteen eighty-eight. So nineteen eighty-eight, twenty twenty-four, it's about time we actually, you know, looked at our system again. So we're actually looking at four different uh areas, topic areas, quality of care, our workforce, because of course we need people to actually, you know, um, be in these facilities and in the communities. Uh, our systems and services, and then financing, which is probably one of the most important things, how are we gonna pay for all of this? So there's ongoing work, um, we're still meeting with our Kupunakaakus. We have a, I was kind of a, throw a plug in there, we meet every Fri- uh Friday, first Friday of the month, our next meeting is next Friday. If you wanna participate, um, let me know, I can give you a Zoom link, but even more power open, it's actually on YouTube, so you don't even need to be on a Zoom link. You can just um get onto YouTube, and it's um at Kupunakaakus is the handle, and we have an account. And all of our meetings are live streamed on YouTube, so you don't even need to be on a Zoom, you can just watch it. And also they're recorded, so you can, even if you're not able to be there at two o'clock on a Friday, you can just go back and watch it and keep up what we're doing. So with that, um, I'll conclude, and take any questions, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Representative Chung for the update, and uh, what's the latest status on that the bill that you had put through for the seniors, the like Amber reports for seniors?
Yes, so that, what we're wa- waiting on right now is the um the funding to be released because even though the legislation is passed, it still needs to be implemented, right? We have to build in the program uh to make sure it actually integrates with all the county law enforcement departments. So that's one of the things that's still being worked out. Hopefully soon.
We really need to get that in place, we've already had this last week, some seniors missing uh from their neighborhoods, and we need to get those alerts out. Go ahead there, Rodney.
Um evening, Mr. Chung. Um, I saw an interesting uh fan on the Japan channel, and it was almost like the life alert tag that they have with the buttons, they fall down, stuff like that. But in Japan, what they did in some of the communities is that they would give uh something like the life alert button, and as they would walk or wherever they would walk, uh, cameras would pick them up. So, you know, something like that, you look at, you know, in Japan and what they do, so that if someone, you know, kupunas get lost or something like that, at least the last time that, you know, they passed the camera. And nowadays, when everybody has I wait forever getting a ring alert, something going, you know, something going on over here. So, you know, some, that we could, as far from a state view, you know, at least it would be tracked. There was also um a question of privacy, you know, we see that stuff too. But, you know, when it comes down to our seniors, you know, privacy to me is not an issue, as long as we can keep track. They would you know, and then, you know, they would be tracked by so wanting to be, so I think that would be something to look at. I mean, the alert to put it out and say, yeah, have you seen this, that's fine. But, you know, uh, if these cameras are out there, the ring cameras, if there's a way that we could make use of them and keep track of these people, they'd be good. Um, I gotta give it to the people of Japan, they got their act together.
Yeah, well, thanks for the question, so that did come up earlier when we were looking at the silver alert on on actually the use of of facial recognition, and that's becoming a larger issue with artificial intelligence in general, and how that's regulated or what the regulations would be around that, because there are a lot of concerns about privacy. And so, because it's kind of a larger discussion we need to have about this new technology and what the positives it can do, but also, you know, the negatives and the things that people are afraid of, you know, just having too much access to uh, you know, being able to track people. So it's something we're looking at, but, you know, AI is gonna be one of those things where um not just as a state, but as a country, we're gonna have to figure out how we're going to adjust to living with it.
Thank you. Good questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, community? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, Representative Trish LaChica, representative here?
Uh, online, I'm here to
Great.
Hi, uh, I'm Erin, here to represent Representative LaChica, uh, thank you for your time. I don't have a very long report tonight, uh, but Rep LaChica has also been a part of actively addressing the canceled school bus routes. Um, our office has collaborated with Governor Green on the recent emergency proclamation and has met with Robert Toye um to discuss routes and what can be done, as well as coordinated a recent info briefing with the Department of Education, and we will continue to keep you updated on any progress. But if anybody has any questions for the representative, I'm happy to send them her way, Chair, next meeting.
All right, Erin, thank you very much, uh, we we've been watching the news and and also I bumped into her at the uh at the at the Capitol uh on the tenth, when we went to see the governor. But uh, yeah, we can't thank her enough for what she's been doing for the bus issues. Uh, board members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, community? Okay, please send our warm regards to her.
Will do, thank you for your time, have a good one.
Okay, moving on, our congressional office, with Congressman Ed Case, we're honored here to have uh Mr. Nestor Garcia, Director of Communications, welcome back.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, those who are assembled here tonight in Momilani and those who are viewing us here online live. Uh, you have my third quarter report from the congressman, just wanted to go over a few highlights in terms of running time here. Uh, one of which is that, as you know, the congressman is a member of the House of Representatives Committee, which funds the federal government each year. And uh, he did manage to see to it that Hawaii got the lion's share of the construction funding as compared to the rest of the country, we're number one when it comes to the amount of money for military construction projects, the bulk of which will go to continue the uh development of Dry Dock Number Five at Pearl Harbor Naval Shipyard, yeah? Which is one of the largest, if not the largest employer, private employer in the state. Um, he wants to make people aware that he's accepting still uh people who are interested, young men and women, who are interested in being nominated to one of the four service academies, yeah? Years old minimum, no lo- no more, no older than twenty-three uh in July of the year that you enter the service academy. Seventeen to twenty-three years old is the age limit. Uh, we're accepting uh applications for nominations to the four service academies uh until October eleventh. October eleventh is the deadline, yeah. Um, community project funding. In the old days, we used to refer to this as port barrel projects. Now we call it community project funding. Uh, since we've been tracking storms this last several days, uh, the congressman for this fiscal year is seeing that whether or not he can get funding for an information sharing platform, a project that was requested by the agency, yeah? This will be a sharing platform where you can um share information with the public and with the private uh entities involved in disaster preparedness and recovery. Everybody on the same page, looking at the same platform for information on how to deal with a disaster, yeah? For this fiscal year, also this fiscal year, I should say, last fiscal year perhaps, there is a community project funding request that we're also pushing for Highlands Intermediate School, right in your back, right in your backyard, yeah? Three hundred thousand dollars for Highlands Intermediate School. What this will do is we'll modernize its uh media center, its media center for Highlands Intermediate. So that's a community project funding request Congressman is pushing as well. Uh, and lastly, for those who might be a little bit uh unnerved by what is happening in Congress, the House did pass a version of the National Defense Authorization Act, which calls for the automatic registration of young men who turn eighteen into the selective service. This is the pool that we would use in case they bring back the draft, in case they bring back the draft. You would be automatically registered when you turn eighteen. Uh, back in my day, you had to be made aware that you had to when you turn eighteen. I didn't know that until somebody said, hey, did you register for the selective service, oh, I said, really? We have to do that? I said, yeah, you have to do that when you turn eighteen, yeah? So now there is a proposal in the House to automatically register young men who turn eighteen into selective service, automatic. The Senate version says women as well, women as well when they turn eighteen, automatically registered to selective service. These are not final These are not final proposals. These are still to be worked out in Congress between the House and the Senate. Here, fusion, alright? Mr. Chairman, take any questions from the board?
Okay, thank you for those great updates from our Congressman. I'm hoping someday he's going to surprise us and walk in on this meeting while he's on, uh, his breaks. Uh, 300K for Highlands, that's great for their center. And we need more of that coming into our schools. So hopefully, uh, Charmaine and some of our other leaders here will help influence that in the future. I'll turn this over to the board. Any other questions? Charmaine?
Um, thank you for, um, almost always being here. We really appreciate it. Um, very quickly, what is a representative's position on the automatic registration of young men and women?
He's for it, for both men and women.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing any? None?
Yeah, it's something.
Go ahead there, Dan.
Well, very briefly, we're aware of another, uh, earmark that's going into, uh, digital equity and workforce training. So that's, uh, some of that's going through the libraries. Well, that's a very, that's a very good, uh, program too. So we thank the representative.
Those are digital, digital literacy, computer classes. Mostly senior citizens sign up. It is free. You have to register with the Hawaii State Library System. Those free computer classes. Till the month of October, I understand, and statewide, yeah? So you have to call the Hawaii State Library System to register. You have to register. You cannot just walk in. Register first and then speak with whether or not you have the, um, you know, enough people to register for a class at any one of the public libraries throughout the state.
Okay, community, any questions for Mr. Garcia? Okay, seeing none. Nestor, thank you very much and give our regards to the Congressman. Okay, moving on to, let's see where we had here. Yeah, the mayor's rep. Uh, unfortunately, uh, Director Abano could not be here, Representative Mayor Blangiati. Uh, so he gave me his report. I'll just go through quick highlights here. Uh, basically, uh, the city continues to add new treatment options for Wahu's chronically homeless population. Uh, friends, families, remember Honolulu lifeguard, uh, Tamayo Berry. Uh, new acting director for the Honoluluish and Safety is sworn in Honolulu Halli. The Waikiki community comes together to unveil new trash cans designed to keep trash off of Wahu beaches. And restoration work continues on the Mahatama Gandhi, Mahatma Gandhi statue near the Honolulu Zoo. Uh, there were no issues brought up, uh, from a previous meeting and that's that report. Moving on to, uh, Councilmember, uh, Okimoto, uh, her representative Jamie Shindel, are you there, Jamie?
Uh, this is Aaron Wilson. How are you?
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes. Uh, well, Chair, Board, uh, congrats again on, uh, the commission there. Uh, wanted to just quickly touch base on the speeding on Lahua Ave. Uh, I spoke with one of the element, the Lahua Elementary reps, uh, last week. Uh, talked to the administration. The Navy actually owns that, that road, right where the, uh, crosswalk is, where, uh, the nubs are worn down. We've asked them to repaint and, and redo the nubs and they said that the Navy is responsible for that area right there. Um, let's see here, uh, this month we had about 15 calls and emails. Um, speeding was one of the major issues. Um, we had HPD monitoring, uh, Nanaka Street. Um, and they said they did not witness any speeding and their presence was, uh, probably the deterrent. Uh, we also had about 12 illegally parked cars, uh, removed from on a street. Um, and today I spoke with an, uh, 87-year-old, uh, who was having some issues with DPP. Uh, she got issued a notice of violation for, uh, some of her, um, sidewalk, uh, sidewalk issue. Uh, she didn't have any internet or anything like that, so she was having issues. Basically, we got the city to, uh, do the work for her and she's, uh, very happy about that. Uh, legislatively, uh, we have, um, Bill 26, uh, that was relating to, uh, our Kupuna, honor our Kupuna Month. That was introduced by the councilmember Okimoto. Uh, it's basically to acknowledge and celebrate the profound wisdom and, uh, the rich legacy and experience our elders contribute to our community. Uh, Bill Three relates to incentives for the, uh, uh, construction of affordable rental housing. Uh, provided anything 300 feet and under, uh, they'll get a post, uh, construction subsidy of $40. Uh, and Resolution 24 dash 117, uh, it's approving the transfer of land, uh, uh, in the Pohala Marsh to the State Department of Land and Natural Resources for conservation purposes. Our next full council is September 4th and, uh, I think, uh, Senator Elafante, thank you, mentioned the Sep- September 11th Joint Town Hall. Where DOT, DTS and HORT will be there, uh, as well as, um, uh, a lot of the different representatives. Uh, last night we had the Special Planning and Economy Committee meeting, uh, at Lee Ward Community College. We apologize, Chair, for the absence of the invitation. Um, and they are going to have another continued discussion in District Five on the 23rd. Uh, and, uh, at the Honolulu Halli, September 26th. Finally, uh, the 1.36 mile portion of Waimano Home Road between, uh, Como Mai Drive and Manalua Road is scheduled for resurfacing next year. Uh, the project is currently in the planning and design phase and expected to go out for bids later this year. Uh, if anyone has any questions, I could take them or at least, uh, get those, uh, uh, back to the, uh, councilwoman.
Okay, Erin, thank you for all those updates, which are very important. Board members, any questions? Go ahead there, Rodney.
Uh, yes, thanks. Uh, what is, uh, uh, when you say design, are you guys gonna redo, uh, any of the way the road is? Uh, add new lanes or, uh, what's in the works for it?
Yes, thank you. Uh, that's part of the, uh, Complete Streets project. So, um, that'll be, um, it's already been like planned and designed and they're just trying to get through that phase currently and make sure that they have, uh, the bids to do the work, uh, that, like I said, that'll be happening later on this year.
Rodney, I'll ask the Complete Streets to come back, give us an update so the committee knows what's going to happen prior.
Yeah, that would be good. Yeah, no surprises. Not good.
Okay, got a hand up over there from, uh, Mr. Donald Sakamoto from the Coni, Coni Oi Neighborhood Board. Donald, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, Donald Sakamoto for the record. Uh, just a, um, quick note, uh, Chair, to you and your board members and committee. I was, uh, uh, contacted by the city auditor to give a, uh, my perspective of the rail skyline. They're doing an audit. And I just wanted to know if, uh, councilmember, they don't can elaborate what's going on with the audit, uh, accessibility for persons with disabilities. So I gave my perspective about the Pearl City Highland Pedestrian Bridge. Uh, that, uh, while Metropolitan Funding Organization or Resolution passed that on to them. And I gave my perspective of accessibility at the rail station, so. Uh, but, uh, we would like to know what, uh, the update later on, on, uh, audit report does come out to the city council.
Would you potentially, uh, like to email me that? Uh, I can get you some answers for that or the board's answer for that. I personally don't have those, uh, but I need to, you know, ask, uh, ask a couple of people to see what's going on.
Yeah, I'll get it to you. Thank you.
Uh, my, my email is, uh, AA. I'll put it in the chat, actually. Uh, also, uh, another thing, uh, we have been, like I said, speeding was our main issue. Uh, we did ask the administration for, uh, a different, a couple of different areas for speed bumps. They did do the, um, the, um, um, the assessments and they said that, uh, that the speed bumps may be a, uh, a possible deterrent, or not deterrent, a, a issue for emergency vehicles coming into certain areas. Uh, in and out of certain areas, uh, where it may make the, the emergencies, um, I guess, uh, worse than they, they could be. So that's some of, that's some of the, um, uh, answers we're getting from the administration currently.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any questions? Go ahead, Dan.
Yes, um, you, you know, the state is good at speed bumps and the city is not. There's a, there's continues to be a problem at the intersection of, uh, Como Mai and Waimano Home Road. Need, uh, left turn lanes or, or there's a possible fix to the solutions. We get huge backups into, into, uh, Palisades around 7:30 in the morning. Uh, left turn lane or, um, al- you know, alternating, you know, if it's your turn, everybody can go. Uh, so this needs to be, um, um, a- addressed and, uh, perhaps we could have somebody come and talk to us about it, uh, next month specifically. Um, and, and, and present some, uh, solutions. Thank you.
Chair, do you think?
Okay, but again, study the issue, alright?
Okay, and across talk, rest of the chair first. Okay, um, we're, we're gonna put that on the list of things because Waimano Home Road came up with a bunch of priorities. We'll try to get somebody down here from the city so we can put together a plan. And that might be the Traffic Transportation Committee meeting. That's where it's got to be solved. Okay, uh, any other questions? Please come up to the mic. Judge yourself.
Hi, my name is Heidi Weaver. Um, I was at the board meeting, neighborhood board meeting a few months ago. And, um, brought to the attention of the board and, um, apparently also to, um, um, Councilmember Okimoto, that our Pearl City Gymnasium at the District Park is in dire need of some help. Uh, when it rains outside, the kids like to play basketball inside, but there is a lake that forms inside the gym. Um, and I did see that there was funding that was proposed by, um, our council member. And I believe that there is $2 million, um, coming to Pearl City to have that fixed. And I just wanted to say thank you for hearing us and for, um, getting that funding for our gym to keep it usable. And I also wanted to piggyback off of what, um, Mr. Smith said regarding the Waimano Home and Como Mai intersection. I do live above that intersection and I walk my children to school down Waimano Home Road every morning. And, um, that road coming out of Palisades, turning on to, making the right on to Waimano Home Road. Cars frequently do not stop at that crosswalk when they have a red light. They treat the green arrow coming off of Waimano Home Road onto Como Mai as though it was also a green right arrow the opposite direction. And, um, every morning I have issues at that intersection when I'm trying to cross with my children. So if we can just elevate that issue once again, um, to make sure that the streets are safe so that we can walk to school and that we can just go for a jog in the morning or take our dogs out or whatever the situation is. Thank you.
Heidi, hold for a second. We had a question from a board member, but thank you for bringing that up. Wait there, Rodney.
Um, yeah, uh, you know, going back to with the gym, uh, that gym has been leaking for years. I mean, my boy played ball basketball over there when he was 12 and now he's 29. So, you know, the thing is being leaked, so. Um, they've tried everything, but, you know, I finally get some cash for that. Um, as far as the Como Mai and Waimano Home Road. So I had a, a question for, uh, Okimoto's, uh, representative. Is that gonna be proposed in the real street, uh, design of Waimano Home Road?
Not sure, not sure. I'll have to get that answer for you.
Yeah, I'll definitely arrange for that update because we have a lot of questions and that's, that's an important issue. It, it happens all around Pearl City. Uh, I've got some ideas I want to present in a resolution because I think it's more than HPD can handle. Uh, we need, we need other type of enforcement and also holding people accountable. And the only way to do that is ticket, ticket, ticket in the mail. Who's gonna do it? Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions? Seeing none? Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, one last thing I wanted to bring up, uh, since we have, uh, the representative there. There's one thing I want to bring up. I got an email from Melanie Asun. Uh, she's from the Community Based Development. All of you remember, uh, back in April, this, we had asked the city to help us with our homeless issues. So they brought the Hono team in. If you notice in Blaisdell, the three, uh, campus tents that are up there. Well, I just want to let you know what the results were. And of course, they extended an extra month. They've asked to extend for another few weeks and I've gone ahead and told them that, uh, we haven't got any community complaints. So we're letting them extend. But, but let me show you the impact of what they've done. Okay, from one April to August 25th, intakes, 321 homeless people. Placed 200 into shelter, 139 reunited with families on island, 15. Relocated and put back on the airplane, back to the mainland, four. And, uh, info transition housing, 24. Uh, into boarding, one, and into permanent housing, 17. So they are making a difference and if there's any way I can keep them in Pearl City, uh, I've, I've offered another location for them. Those of you know that go to the store all the time, Don Quixote, Sam's Club, everything. You know the main hub is right there on Kamehameha Highway and Waimano Home Road. That is the gauntlet. And, uh, if we get something close by there, maybe we can get, engage more. But, uh, that, I also want to put a plug in for Core, you know, with, with Sam Boku, the mayor's representative. He's helped our board out with the homeless individuals. The problem is Core goes out, but they don't want to go anywhere. They want to stay right where they're at. So we still got to work those issues. I just wanted to provide that, provide you that update. Any questions, uh, in regard for Val Kupi and his representative? One more question that we got? Okay, Val Kupi, Aya Tulomi, that's what I see up on the screen. Val, you there?
Hi, I'm here. I'm Valerie Kupiha Tui Loma from Kalahua West of Wahoo. Um, I'm the Region Three and Five Outreach Director for the Homeless Agency KWO. Um, we do, we've been, um, collaborating with Hono a lot. We've also been collaborating with a lot of representatives, um, DLNR, um, Core, a lot of homeless agencies. Um, we are the outreach team for this region. And I just want to say big ups to Hono for their accomplishments. Um, from what I heard, they are trying to get on into the west side. I do feel that being in the area that they're in, Pearl City, I know a lot of people had, um, some thoughts against it. I really think that they did a, a big impact where they're at. So kind of keeping them around the same area for at least three more months because they are a 90-day program. And that's usually how it works. After 90 days and they go to the next city, the next town. Um, I know they were looking to go into Kapole as their next area or YNI. Um, but I'm gonna put my information in the chat for anyone, um, having community concerns. Um, I have my direct cell number, my email. You can either call me or give me, um, shoot me an email. And my team can go out and canvas where the individuals or families are. And we can provide services and ultimately try to get them on the state list, um, get them a housing resource. Um, a lot of families though that are out there, they do have the choice to stay out there. Some of them, I want to say 5 to 10% choose houselessness. I just want the community to be aware of that. Like, we can go out as much as we want and we can service as much people and do as much intakes. But sometimes some people don't want to be housed. Um, the individuals and families that we do service, um, if, if it's a mental health concern and, and you see someone like doing unsafe behaviors, it's not an outreach call. It is an HPD call. It is a 911 call. Um, in order for us to try to get people court ordered services, HPD has to generate so many reports before there is a court order that can take place for those individuals that are needing those medical needs or those mental health needs. Um, and I just wanted the community to be aware of that and just let you folks know that we are out there.
Okay, Val, thank you very much. And, uh, you and I will be communicating, collaborating later. Uh, because I, I really want to continue to work our issues for Pearl City. And other than that, any other questions from, uh, the community? Okay, seeing none? Okay, and, uh, and Erin, I want to thank you very much for giving us the updates. Anything else, Erin, I'll wind up moving on.
Thank you. That should be it.
Okay, give our regards to, uh, the councilmember. I was on the phone with her this afternoon and she had some personal to take care of. Okay, moving on to Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam, Mr. David Hodge and Mr. Victor Flint, a dynamic duo from Pearl.
You guys are too nice to us, you know. Uh, Chair Varey, thank you, members of the community, members of the board. Uh, we appreciate the time to provide an update for August. And we're finding it hard to believe that August of the summer is just about gone. Uh, for the Navy Closure Task Force, uh, things are moving on. Uh, we've just, uh, last week we had our open house over at the Monalua Terrace Community Center. We had about 50 people come out. So we had a really successful event. So we had a really successful event, lots of information to share. The next one will be in October. I'll keep it informed. We can spread it to the constituents and make sure. Our goal is to move throughout the areas that were affected by the water so we can keep everybody informed of the latest closure procedures and where we're at. Right now, on August 20th, last, last week, we published a press release that I think you've seen. I think I passed all the neighborhood boards that I have worked with. Lots of good operational updates. I won't go through too much except for that the Navy currently has more than 40 water monitoring wells around the Red Hill facilities. We just installed 21 over the last year and the 22nd by the end of this month will be in play. We're ahead of schedule. In fact, we've, seven and eight were cleaned out last week and are ready for pressure washing until they discovered some structural things, some structural repairs on that catwalk that needs to be addressed before they actually do the pressure washing. Tanks five and six, you'll see, come online for ventilation coming up in the next week. And then we'll start those two-by-twos just like we did with seven and eight. Other than that, any other questions that we have, that the, that the folks have that I can answer or take back? But I'll go ahead and turn it over to cousin Victor here for the base update.
Okay.
Thank you, brother. I gotta lower the mic a bit because you're so tall. Victor Flitt, Naval Facilities. Last month, the Navy helped out our Maui brothers and sisters by sending over two huge wastewater centrifuges. This. Ah, please, sir.
Speeding? What's speeding?
Those centrifuges separate water from the sludge and it, and this way the solid material can be dumped. And it, it just helps the environment. So this is a good thing. August 22nd, the Navy Command was invited to the Pearl City Peninsula Town Hall. And thank you so much for being there and representing the neighborhood board, Larry. Results were very similar to tonight. Lehuwa Elementary School traffic issues, the homeless encroachment, stuff like that. And we were there to answer any and all questions along with bringing not only our, the head guy for Pearl Harbor, but subject matter experts dealing water quality and, and police and all this other stuff to help sell the Navy story. And thank you very much for being there. RIMPAC, the largest naval exercise in the world, ended August 1st. Part of this year's RIMPAC was emergency response to islands and communities that need help, whether it be rescue, restoration, stuff like that, power restoration. So that was a big part of our, this year's RIMPAC. And we had all those heavy weather events, tropical storms and hurricanes through the southeast. We got lucky again. We dodged another bullet. Big Island took a hit, though. But the Navy was there to help out if requested. And like our scout guest tonight, we pray for the best, but we prep for the worst. Mike, are there any questions for Brother Duna or myself?
Okay, thank you for the updates. There is one thing you didn't mention, the Pearl Harbor Bike Trail cleanup.
October the 19th.
Oh, you did? Did you mention that?
October the 19th. Got the email from Mr. Takuta just Friday afternoon late.
Okay.
So they've set that date for the 19th of October. So we'll be out there again.
But hopefully we'll get a lot of community. I know you're gonna get a lot of military to help you. So board members, any questions for our Navy team? Go ahead, there you go.
Yes, briefly, I attended that briefing and I think that the Navy has turned around so that they're now providing honest information instead of frankly lying about. Well.
Okay.
No, I mean, the spill, they say, oh, it wasn't a problem, right? Turned out to be a great problem. But now, now there's active monitoring, community involvement. And, and of course, we have this long-term health monitoring. So it was a very informative session. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Uh, community? Rodney, go ahead.
Mr. Victor, how are you tonight, sir? Um, so as it was addressed earlier in the evening, the road front in Lehuwa School is, belongs to the Navy, which would make it a federal property. So your concerns about speeding, would it be a harder hit from the Navy Police or the federal police than it would be a hit from the city and county police? Um, would that ticket, say if the federal government put that ticket out, would it be a harder hit to the motorists than it would be coming from a city and county?
So our, our patrols wouldn't be able, the jurisdiction lies inside the base. So they wouldn't be able to do anything. But we've been talking after hearing so many complaint, not complaints, so many concerns. Better word, yeah. So many concerns. I'm gonna take it back to some of our kissing cousins at Pearl City Peninsula and see if we can't look at something. Maybe if something as simple as putting a patrol unit, just parking it on the side of the road. There's some, there's plenty of areas to do that. And we're also thinking about volunteers to come out and stand at that crosswalk, you know, and start there. And that might free up some HPD resources for highlights.
Yeah, because I think, I think, well, what I'm trying to get at is anytime it's a federal rap, it's a mandatory, it's a harder hit.
Yeah.
So if the people know about that.
If it's on our property, yeah, our, our agents, I guess.
Yeah, so that'll put some teeth into it. Yeah.
Since the Pearl City Peninsula Town Hall, we're addressing that. So it went from the police and both HPD and Navy Police, they work concurrent. And like what Duna said, just making a presence helps. You see that blue light? Everybody is now Makala. But we spoke with our Public Works Command about installing traffic calming things, whether it be striping, pumps, not bumps, pumps, or emergency response. We can't handle the bumps. But all that's in discussion now. The next is to compete for funding. So, but safety is the big issue. Kids and our general public is the big issue. And yeah, we're pushing it and that conversation has started already.
Yeah, I'd like to see it go a little bit further because like I said, you know, if it's a city and county issue, you know, they'll blow it off. But if it's a federal issue, you know, now it's mandatory. The federal rap is always mandatory. So it's like, if I give you city and county, oh, I'm gonna give you 10 years. Okay, we'd one or two you off for good behavior. But with a federal rap, it's 10 years, you're gonna do 10 years.
Writing is down, there's a record of this. Brother Rodney, no worries. I'm gonna follow up.
Rodney, it's like Victor said, Chair, it's like Victor said, if we can get the ball rolling with some easy to manage resources, you know, that, and we can, we can help until we get some city and county help.
Yeah, because I mean, if, 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 like I said, if it's a Navy property, then it's not only speeding, it's widespread homelessness, death. You know, as long as these people know that, hey, brother, you're on federal property, go ahead. And you know where you're gonna end up.
Okay, all right.
It's the right thing to do.
All right. Well, gentlemen, we gotta get moving on here. Thank you so much for the updates. We'll come up with some creative idea to try to work and help collaborate with HPD and the military base police on that road. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on. Well, there they are, right there. Big thank you for PAC 75. All right. Uh, we've got our chancellor here back. I missed your last meeting.
Right.
But welcome back and thank you for helping the city council host that meeting that I was delinquent at yesterday. Everybody gets the word, says, how did I miss that? But I, I had other meeting. But welcome back there, Chancellor Carlos Benalosa. Appreciate your updates.
Hello, hi, everyone. Thank you, Chair Veray, members of the board and the community. I have an actual audience today. Really happy to share quite a bit of updates. Lee Word Community College Chancellor. I wanted to share a little bit about the wrap-up for the summer. I don't know if any of you got to attend Made in Hawaii. We had a pretty strong presence with 15 of our entrepreneurs going through our Waheva Value Added Product Development Center. So 15 businesses at Made in Hawaii this year from the effort that we've been working on in revitalizing local agriculture through value-added products. And so that was a pretty amazing event for us. We just started our fall semester this past Monday. And I'm happy to say that we have the highest enrollment we've had in the last five years this fall. Compared to last year, same time, we're about 400 students ahead. In addition to that, we hit an additional major milestone in that we have over 1,000 early college students. We celebrated some of this during our last commencement ceremony where some of the Pearl City High School students were actually getting certificates from Lee Word before they graduated high school. So that's pretty amazing. We're focusing a lot on CTE, on certificates that get students, not just ready for the workforce, but also in a pipeline for an associate's or beyond in education. So we're very excited to have that. A couple of quick reminders that I share. We are seeing more students in person on the Pearl City campus. And so it's not something to worry about traffic yet because quite a few of our students are still using bus and rail. But we are seeing a lot more in-person students. So it's super exciting. We're getting that, that life back on campus. The other thing is the Pearl, our fine dining room. Reservations are open, open table. They sell out very quickly. The first reservations start September 6th. And we go on for the remainder of the semester. And then the last bit that I'll share is that our Hoikea Kea Art Gallery is opening a new exhibit August 31st, and it runs through the month of October. Bittersweet is called the exhibit, and it's just something that would be really nicely paired. Fine dining and going to the exhibit. It's just a really wonderful experience. But again, we're having more and more of our local students come through early college and just boosting our enrollment and celebrating amazing success. And so thank you all for listening and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Chancellor. Appreciate all the updates. And well, I wish they would have had those programs when I was in high school. I would have loved to take really opportunities. Board members, any questions? Rodney? Dan Flitt?
How about the bus driver, uh, school bus driver training? Any progress there?
Sure, absolutely. So I don't know if you've passed by my campus, but we actually have the bus onsite. We're prepping it to start our classes. We're getting, getting federal green light for us to start offering the training. And we're in the middle of recruiting for our bus training program instructors. And so if anyone's interested in applying, it's been a little bit hard to recruit for that, but we're in the middle of that and we should be announcing the first classes very soon.
And, and the other workforce thing is that with $194 million to connect people to the internet, there's gonna be a lot of need for technicians and you can train fiber optic technicians and installers in less than, less than a semester.
That's right.
So that's a real CTE certificate opportunity.
That's right. Thank you.
Hey, board members, any other questions? Go ahead, Rodney.
Any good shows coming up this winter?
Anyone, sorry?
Any good shows coming up this winter?
So we, we do, we are celebrating the 50th anniversary of the theater. And we are rolling out that, the season. And so probably for the next neighborhood board meeting, I'll be able to share what the upcoming shows are. Yeah.
Theater and a show.
What's that?
Theater and a show.
All right. Well, thank you and appreciate the updates. Are there any questions from the community? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you have a question? Nope, you're good. Okay. All right, moving on. And, and I see Vicki virtually awake, ready to give us an update on our library. All right, Vicki.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So first off, I'm just gonna mention that the library is gonna be closed on September 1st and September 2nd. That's the Sunday and the Monday and observance of Labor Day. Someone mentioned about the digital literacy classes. It's a really great program. We just wrapped up. They do four-week sessions every week and they just wrapped it up at our library this past Sunday. Unfortunately, they're gonna, they're moving on to other libraries since their goal is to hit up every single library to provide these classes. So every community has the chance to partake in these classes. They're really, really, really needed. And I am in talks with them. I already asked them if they could return because I feel like in our community especially, we do have a large number of people who really could use these classes. So they said they're open to bringing it back to this area. But in the meantime, you can call us to schedule a class because next month they're gonna go to IA Library and we can help you get signed up for registered classes over there. Also, I, I went into a partnership with Legal Aid and they're gonna be providing help in enrolling into the MedQuest and Marketplace Health Insurance Program. We have our outreach person, her name is Karen Takamoto, and you can reach her at 808-990-3037. She's gonna provide a lot of information about this. We're gonna be doing this every Monday from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And she's gonna start off doing this for the next three months. And if there's a big enough response and there's a lot of people who are interested in coming to our location to talk to her, then she'll probably keep going to our, our location until, for as long as it's needed. In September, we're gonna be bringing back our Kiki Storytime and Craft every Thursday, starting, I think it's September 5th, and that's at 10:30. And then we're also gonna be bringing back our Beginner Tai Chi classes. That's gonna be on September 11th, Wednesday, and September 25th, Wednesday from 9:30 AM. You don't have to register for that. If you want to know more about our programs, you can come see us at the library. You can contact us at 808-453-666. Or you can check out our website, www.ve.org. Thank you.
All right, Vicki, thank you for all the updates for the community and thank you and your staff for your dedication for, for taking care of our community.
Oh, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Veray. I'm sorry, couldn't hear.
Rodney? All right, Vicki, thank you so much. We'll see you next month.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, okay, moving on. Mr. Arlen Ledward. And we got you in person today. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, members of the Pearl City community. No Water Main breaks to report for last month. Board of Water Supply is participating in a water access and affordability survey taking place in communities across the country. We encourage the public to fill out the questionnaire Sunday, up through Sunday, September 15th. It should take about five to 10 minutes to complete. The form, you can either scan the QR code and fill it out on your phone or you can go online, portofwatersupply.com, click on the customer service link and it's the homeowners questionnaire. Your input will assist the Board of Water Supply to implement programs that benefit, that help vulnerable residents, including our Hakuna. Responses will remain confidential. If you want to fill it out and return it to me, I can take it back. We have copies of the questionnaire, like I said, online at Satellite City Halls, at our Public Service Building at Baritania, or again, you can scan the QR code and fill it out on your phone.
Okay, great. Board members, please take that survey so we can give the Board of Water Supply great feedback. And, and of course, the staff has always been very responsive with, you know, with Ernie Lau and Kathleen. And just let everybody know, today I've been on the phone with BWS, Board of Water Supply, and they found meter for the cemetery. So soon we'll have irrigation back in the cemetery. But are any questions for Board of Water Supply?
Thanks, Arlen.
Okay. Any questions from the virtual none? Community? Seeing none? Thank you, Arlen. Appreciate you waiting around. Okay, moving on to association updates. Tony, any updates for Pearl City High School PTSA?
Joe Hafn mentioned most of the events that's going on. There'll be a Panda Express. There'll be a Panda Express August 29th and a bowling tournament, 9/8, September 8th. And what the truck on September 27th. This is all for PG 2025. But then that, that's it.
Anything for the Pearl City Community Association for calc?
No. Yeah.
Okay, no updates?
We just had them, but yeah, no updates.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to regular board meeting minutes. You all got the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So make a motion.
Okay, so with Dan and, and with Tony? Okay, any discussion? Any updates? Okay, hearing none? If there are no objections, if you see any objections, they're approved. Okay, meetings by attended by the Board Members, you all mentioned that today. We all attended some off to the side and provided those updates to our representatives. As far as announcements, I personally, this board wants to thank PAC 75, our Cub Scouts and the community. In the future, these guys are gonna need some funds for donations to help them succeed in a lot of their endeavors. I'll be reaching out to the community to help out. And by the way, I went home, I told my wife I joined another, I joined PAC 75 and I'll be 75 in two months. All right. So Board Members, any last good announcements? Okay, hearing none? Oh, we got Charmin.
Chair.
Bye, Chair.
If anybody is interested in being considered to serve on the board into the next election, if they could either send an email with like their, you know, like bullet points of, you know, who they are, that would be useful.
Yeah, as the Vice Chair, she said, anybody who'd like to take that vacant position that we have for the Board to approve it, tell me your background and the Board that gives it opportunity to look at it and we'll, we'll vote, we'll vote that individual that the Board selects next month. Okay, Vice Chair, anything else? Okay, nothing more? All right, and also Anson and your, that's what the other gentleman said. Kurt. Yeah, Kurt, Kurt's a rookie here today. He's learning, Curtis. He's learning today what it's, what it's like to be an NCO rep and all the documentation and minutes and everything to be done. But welcome to our board. And Anson's been doing absolutely outstanding. So all of you that showed up today, this was a very huge group. We really like to see turnout like this. And we brought patriotism back into our meetings. We lost that. We went into pandemic and went virtual and now we're bringing it back again. But also, one thing is being appreciative, living in such a great state, the best place in the world and as we respect the Hawaiian community. So thank you all so much and we hope to see you next month. Aloha.